Question.
Call to order the meeting of the Morgan County Council for Monday, March 6, 2023. I've asked Brian to lead us in the pledge and Vicki will lead us in the prayer. If you'll all stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, just let us give thanks for all the opportunities that you allow us on a daily basis. Thank you for allowing to us to live in Morgan County, Indiana and represent the citizens here in the way that we do. Let our work be pleasing, let us be justifiable, and let it be to the benefit of all the citizens here. Dear Lord, we do ask for healing for those who are sick and hurt. We ask for peace of mind and solutions to those that suffer mental health. We ask for protection over those who serve in public service. In all these things, we pray in your precious name as we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. We'll have the record show that all councilmen are in attendance. Did everyone get a copy of the February 6, 2023 minutes and have an opportunity to review those?
Vicki Kivett makes a motion that we accept those minutes as presented.
Troy Springfield, second.
You, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. We're going to move into some additional appropriations. The first coming from the commissioners. We don't have, are you, are you going to speak on behalf of that one? Okay, great. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Good evening. When we went through the budget process and talked about the budget, there was a $25,000 training overlap fund that was set up for us. And this was for people coming in and people leaving so that we could have an overlap and we could not lose all that knowledge walking out the door. And when the budget was submitted, it was omitted. So I'm asking you to please do an additional appropriation for that $25,000.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we had found the need for that in years past and we had added that to the budget. So, did anyone have any questions regarding that or any comments? Do you all recall those that were in the budget meetings, those, that addition?
When it said that it was approved but not advertised or included, it was in the bottom line amount of what we approved as a total budget, correct?
It was not.
No, no, it's just during the budget workshops when you went through the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone was in favor of it.
Okay.
When Dan was making his adjustments and moving things around in the budget, that one just got dropped.
Right. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
Vicki Kivett makes a motion that we approved $25,000 as advertised.
Melissa Green will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. I have someone waiting to use it right now.
Yes, I think so. All right, and then our next item on the agenda is MBH Restricted Fund, County Highway.
Good evening.
Good evening, Grant.
Good to see you all. You all look wonderful.
What do you want to know?
Am I getting really good at this public speaking thing? Anyways, this here is a transfer for some money that we received from a truck incident on one of our roads.
That's really not an additional?
No, it isn't additional.
You want to explain? Yeah, because again.
Go for it.
I get what you're saying. You got it in from an insurance.
We got it in and this is what I'm being told to do. So, again, verbiage is.
I know.
It's like when we receive a grant, it has to be appropriated. Is that kind of what we're?
So.
But was there damage done to a county truck? Is that what you're saying?
No, there was a semi hauling a piece of equipment that had nothing to do with us.
Okay.
Oh, it damaged the paving?
Tore up the pavement.
Okay, you meant there was a vehicle?
No, and this is things that we as a county are trying to improve is following up with these insurance claims that I have talked to Rich about. There is a program that he has in place to where if there is damage to the state property, sends it to the state, the state highway goes out, looks at it, and then can collect. This didn't necessarily come from that program. This came from concerned residents around the area that were nice enough, but we followed through with it. And we were able to get this money and Wallace gave us a quote and that's what it amounts to.
Okay. Wait, so what does Rich have to do with it?
I think he's wanting to try and get this program going. I was going to let you know a little bit about it. State Highway has a deal that if we go out on a crash or guard rail, damage state property, we have a tag that we put on there. They're notified by that tag with that person's name, whoever crashed into there. They can come back and try and collect off the people that caused the damage to the state property. So, working with Grant, we're going to try maybe get that going through County Highway here also.
Great.
Is that a relatively new program?
You did.
It's been there since I've been sheriff with the, with the State Highway. They've recovered millions of dollars. We get letters every so often from the commissioner saying, "Thank you to this deputy. He tagged it. We got this much money back." So, it works.
That's good. I didn't know that.
So, you know, as you know, I mean, it doesn't just pertain to just asphalt. It can pertain to grating, a side ditch, or, you know, look at our guard rail throughout the county. It's in horrible shape and.
We just like that it really wasn't additional money. It's just that it's, yeah. It's money that you got, you received that you just need moved to the appropriate line. Got it. Anyone else have questions on that?
To the restricted so that it lets you do more paving, just that little bit more? Is that why it's going to the restricted fund or, I'm just curious?
I'm going to let, Linda, I mean.
Well, I think the contractual paving has to come out of the restricted fund.
And that's where we deposited that check.
So it's going to the contractual paving or it's going to, we're going to move it to the restricted fund?
It's the contractual paving line and under the MBH Restricted Fund.
Okay, I see what you're saying. It's inside the, okay.
It is inside the overall.
Pay for.
That $13,294 to contractual paving.
Jason Maxwell, seconds.
Thank you, Chip. Thank you, Jason. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to the second part of your agenda, the 2023 Salary Ordinance Amendment. It's a little misleading. It says adding a jail matron position, but this is a short-term situation in which we're going to use that overlap money.
We already have, have that in.
We tried. It's all right. I understand it.
So basically because the current salary ordinance only allows for one jail matron, we are adding a second jail matron so we can start training the new person as the jail matron for the month of March. Shelley's last day is March 31st and then, yeah, so we're. Correct.
Wow, Shelley's been there a lot of years.
How many years has Shelley been with us? I'm telling her you said that, Rich.
Thirty-two.
The roads when you need it.
She's probably watching this right now.
She probably is.
She's been with us 32 years.
Thirty-two years, well, we, we sure appreciate her years of service.
Four sheriffs. She's trained four sheriffs.
She has, yes.
She's still working on one of them.
She's still training him.
When will that training be complete?
Well, honestly, it's going to be an ongoing training. We currently have the new matron going through training starting today through our 80-hour jail course that's required of any jail employee. And then she'll have to do jail school within this year, which is the academy for the jail. And then, so her training's going to be ongoing this year. Her training with Shelley has already kind of begun unofficially, but she is, will officially start that after this 80-hour training. So.
Is she an internal hire or did we get her from outside?
No, she's external. Yep.
Great.
And we do not need funds for this. There's enough in that line item. We just need the second position.
So it's not really an additional. Right, that's why it's not an additional. Okay.
I have no problem.
I have no problem with that. Well, I look for a motion to approve the addition of the jail matron position with no additional funding for the month of March.
Melissa Green will make the motion to approve the additional matron at the jail with no additional funding. I think that's it. Is that all we need?
March.
For the month of March.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Also, I want to thank Councilman Calt came in today and spent some time with the jail, so we appreciated that and I think that was.
They let you out?
They did, yeah. Yes.
It was rough.
Panic attack when saying, "Which way's out of here?"
Yeah, that happens.
It is a maze. Yes.
You would be surprised that the inmates that have those too.
It made me a little, little nervous that time. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, county commissioners, county investment policy. Did we have someone that was going to address that? Don, are you going to address that or Jim? Okay, so we don't need to address this this evening then?
Motion to table?
Yeah, thank you. Vicki Kivett made a motion to table. Kim Meredith will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll move on to special duty incentive pay ordinance. As you may recall, last meeting, we tabled this one. It was the ordinance in which at budget time, we had addressed an incentive policy at the, at the jail and Dave had gone over that with us. I think then when it came for the first payroll of the new year, there was some confusion as to who was entitled to it, what positions were entitled to it. And I think there was some confusion on our understanding of it. I know I, during the budget session, and, and I fault myself for this, I may not have asked enough questions, but I know in my reading of it, I was thinking it was for Matrix employees only. But I know when it come through payroll, it was given to administrative positions as well. Am I explaining that right, Linda?
I believe so.
So I think before us tonight is the question, do we leave it as is? Do we change it to Matrix employees only? And I know I have had calls from folks that are non-jail employees that are saying, you know, if you're going to incentivize education, it needs to be done across the board in the county. And, and it's my fault again, I say for not, not going through that myself. But I think one thing that really confused me, and maybe Dave can elaborate on this, but there was an incentivization given to a position that required a degree to take that position or to have that position. So I didn't see why we were giving an additional incentive for a position that already required that degree anyway. Does that make sense? Is that, yeah? So, did anyone else have questions or comments on that or thoughts? We need to address it. We need to change this ordinance or leave this ordinance. So we.
I, I too thought it was Matrix employees only.
So do you leave the education part in this writing to Matrix or do we just go?
That's what we're asking, which.
We take the whole education degree part out of it?
I'm open to suggestions. That's, I mean, we've got to.
So two things for me. I was very much like you in the fact that I thought it was Matrix only, number one. And number two, I thought it was incentive for the betterment of that position during your tenure, not, not to go back to if they were hired in, those things were all known at the hire date.
So it wasn't a going forward at more education to do your job better. It was.
Correct.
It's going back and making it retro.
Correct. So a better explanation for me in my line of business, if I hire somebody, the job description states minimum of bachelor's degree, minimum of associate's degree, and therefore when I interview that person, they have an associate's or bachelor's degree and they know going in. That's, that position is based on that level of education. And, and therefore, anything above and beyond that, once they're hired in, then that would be the incentive piece. That's the way I took it.
That's how it works, yeah. And, and, yeah.
Right, that's.
Go retro back.
So I also thought it was just Matrix partners and I thought, you know, if someone gets any credentials in, let's say, crisis intervention training or something like that, right? Because they have to de-escalate a situation that they go on a call. I thought that additional training would qualify that person for that additional money, right? But I do know when I talked to Dave, that he said that he had made some examples, and I didn't recall the examples, and I, you know, at the time, that also talked about other people, you know, the non-Matrix. But again, I think that should be across the county. And if we do it for one department, that, and I have also talked to other people who work in the county, that, you know, I understand why Dave is asking for it because like any department head, he's going to ask for what he can get for his employees, right? I get that. But I also thought it was just Matrix, so it's my understanding.
So I think, do we all have a copy of that ordinance? Does everyone have a copy of that in your packet? Because in Section 1, Morgan County Sheriff's Department personnel are eligible for special duty incentive pay for the following qualifications. Education degree, so nursing, for instance. That would have had to have that degree coming in, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not picking on anyone. But just in these, some of these positions, that was a, I mean, that's a requirement of the job anyway, so I, I just don't see that there's.
But I'm thinking in that instance, somebody could have a nursing degree, but they were burned out on nursing and they would be hired as dispatch or, well, that's not as a jail, you know, something within the jail.
Specialized.
But, but it's not nursing, which is their degree that you would give them?
I thought during the discussion, it was, the question was asked, when would the incentive be awarded? And that was once upon the completion of the said training or the certificate received.
I agree, Troy. So if I'm hearing everyone correctly, I think we're in agreement that we all anticipated this was going to be Matrix employees only, correct?
That's what I thought, yes.
Well, I, I don't know about, I wasn't exactly thinking just Matrix, but the education part, I did not think it was something that you got a degree 20 years ago and now you get that bump.
Forty-four, yeah.
That's what, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with the rest of this if you strike out the whole education degree part of it and just get rid of that little sentence completely. Are the, and this would be a question for Rich and Dave, are any of these other things that are listed on there, are those, are those things someone that is not in the Matrix could even do? Section 1.
Critical Incident Management, Jason, would be the only one.
Okay.
That would not.
And that, and that's why I think just saying Matrix I wouldn't do. I would just take the education component out of it.
Okay.
Because if someone that's not in the Matrix but does one of these extra things to help out, I think they should get it.
You mean fulfilling, fulfilling duties outside of their job?
Outside of their job, yes, which that's what the rest of these are. These aren't, these aren't things they would have to do. They don't have to do them at all.
That's correct.
So none of these other things are required?
No.
But to have a nurse work at the jail, she has to have her RN?
Right.
Well, LPN or RN.
LPN or RN. She has to be a licensed nurse. Okay.
Do you have anyone outside the Matrix that's like serves on the SWAT team?
Just the Critical Incident Management team. And there's just one employee.
I was getting ready to ask how many, so that would just be one.
Yeah.
And anybody else outside of the Matrix that meet any of these other qualifications or is that the only one? Is that the same question? Did I just ask the same question?
Yeah, they, they wouldn't be, they, so they wouldn't be able to, within the scope of what those other things are, would be law enforcement corrections based only if you were certified already as a correctional officer or law enforcement officer, would you be able to participate with that, with the exception of the Critical Incident Management? The rest are all specialty teams or training folks.
Yeah, I, I would strike that education sentence out of there. The rest of it's fine. The education thing, I think at some point down the road, we as a whole county are going to have to look at that if the job market doesn't change especially, unfortunately.
You know, this is kind of a symptom, you know, these guys are struggling to attract and retain personnel they need and I think that's true of all of our public safety officials. You know, and again, it kind of hurts us that we're a donut county because we're competing against Hendricks County. We're competing against Johnson, Marion, anywhere that are, have a much larger tax base. And then I know we're trying to prepare for growth and be ready and we're doing a lot of good things to do that. But at the same time, that really, you know, we're limited by our tax base. And unfortunately, we just, we can't do everything that we'd like to do. And I think this is a case of that. And for better or worse, the solution is a compromise that we can do, so.
Well, and I think we all have the same thought process that if we want to do education, it needs to be a county-wide incentive, not just one department. And so, Jason, did you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Well, we'll have to have a new ordinance, I guess, drawn up, but yeah, I'd go ahead and make that motion to, ordinance, well, there's not a number on it, but the ordinance that's before us, because I don't see a number on it, be accepted with the exception of the education degree sentence being striked out of it. Is that good enough?
Yeah.
I think in Section 1 will stay, except the education degree, nursing, associate, bachelor, master.
So read how that, read how you, you want that to read on record.
Let's see, starting Section 1, Morgan County Sheriff's Department personnel are eligible for special duty incentive pay for the following qualifications. Correctional, emergency response team member, certified field training officer, active state certified instructor, critical incident stress management, team member, PRIA investigator, SWAT team member, or certified K-9.
In Section 2, 3, and 4, 5.
Section 2, 3, 4, and 5 remain as they are.
I want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
We take that out. You now have employees who are not Matrix who are going to come to you and say, well, they said I could get the extra pay if I go through one of those. Are you, are you going to then have to allow them to go through one of those even if it's not something that's really going to do anything for you?
No, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And like I said, there would only be, the only thing that a non-Matrix person could go through would be the Critical Incident Stress Management team. So the rest, no one would qualify for.
Okay.
So we have the motion. Did you have a question?
No, I was just saying.
I, I do. So what happens to that money we've already paid them?
It just wouldn't continue hereafter.
What's, that's up to you. Because like at my company, I accidentally got overpaid my first check in January from something that happened last year and I had to pay it back, so.
The council agreed to go ahead and pay us until this was resolved.
Okay, yeah, okay, we did. Okay, so I, I think we, if there's changes made, I think that's going forward, not retro.
Just wanted to clarify.
We can clean that up after this.
Okay.
One more question. Is there anybody in your group right now that has an associate's degree that will complete their bachelor's degree in 2023?
No.
See, my question is if we strike that out and somebody's going through the process, so they're, they're not eligible?
No.
No.
And they wouldn't have started that for this incentive. I mean, they would have already been.
Because Troy, Troy, if, if we let them do that and then every other department comes at budget time and says, we want to do this too. We have, we might have 50 people go back to school, which we don't right now want to be paying for.
We can't.
We can't.
Sure, we'd love to and we'd love to give incentive for education. I mean, that, it's a win-win for everyone.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah.
I don't know that a whole lot of people are going to go pay $18,000, $20,000 for a master's.
To get a $1.44.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I doubt that's going to happen.
Good point.
Right, attract.
That, that was the goal of this was as an incentive, when we go to colleges and we're recruiting, which we do, and have been to two this month, or, you know, within the last 30 days, that's an incentive to go, in which we had two come do a tour from Indiana State University, one from Vincennes University. So for us to say, okay, well, we can bring you in as a jail officer. This is also going to, you know, this is an incentive our, our facility offers or law enforcement offers when we're recruiting from colleges, but Hendricks County's going to the same ones we are. And if they offer more, I mean, two tables sitting there side by side and they, we are literally, Hamilton.
You're nicer.
I wish that's all that it took.
I will say, I, I took, I took my opportunity today to specifically ask that question. And I was told by all of them that it was a huge incentive for them to stay, that they were able to get that extra money.
The folk, you mean, at, at our jail?
At our jail, yes. So.
We can't compete with that. We just can't, we don't have the tax base to compete with that.
But they're not graduating either.
And, and we get it. We do. We understand it, but.
This was our be reasonable as much as possible and still have some tools. But that's where the education side came from. It wasn't really just to benefit the current staff. It was so we had some tools at the beginning versus calling in a signing bonus or whatever you want to do. And it, and it was something you got over time, not initially.
And then you could walk away in a year. Yeah.
Correct. But we understand the other side too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So are we saying on the next payroll, which is when, Linda? It'll be the $1.44 bit. Okay. It'll be all the month of March then.
Right.
You have a motion and a second.
Who was my second?
He didn't have a second. We asked questions.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason, a second by Brian. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Oh, but, okay. And, all right, that was special duty. And then we have other business. Was there something else that I? Oh, okay. All right. Okay, that'd be great.
Welcome, Mr. Collier.
Hello, Mr. Collier. Thanks for joining us this evening.
I've been talking about you, Collier.
Hey, Chief.
Good evening, Council. I don't think we made it to the agenda, but we just wanted to follow up on our request for ARPA money for gear to see if the Council had made any decision on whether they're going to be able to help us out with that or if there's been any decisions on what the county's going to be able to do with that money.
I don't think we've, I mean, we, it didn't make it to our agenda, so we have not kind of had a conversation and gone over that yet. I don't know. Did anyone have comments or thoughts on that?
You were asking for ARPA money for that, right?
Right.
Was it $70,000?
Just a little over $70,000, yes.
Is the ARPA committee meeting? I don't... Has there been a meeting for 2023 that anyone knows? No.
No.
So is it just up to the council then to start making these little...
It's not up to the council.
I do have a question. You know, the vendor that you said that you got the quote from, did you get other quotes, too, or is that just, did you get one?
We got several different quotes. The problem right now is the lead time. We ended up going with this vendor. It was the lowest cost, but it was also the quickest turnaround time that got us the gear here before it expired, our current gear. So that's why we ended up going with this vendor.
Lowest cost, quickest turnaround time.
Correct.
And what's the turnaround time for that?
It should be here in about another six to eight weeks.
Have you, you've ordered it?
Yes, it's already been ordered.
You just need to pay for it?
Right.
I'm curious what you've done in the past. I mean, turnout gear obviously has the expiration over time. What have you done about the turnout gear in the past? Have you borrowed for it? Have you leased it?
Sometimes we've borrowed for it, sometimes we've leased it. If we have to, we'll end up paying for it out of capital improvement and put other things on the back burner.
And it lasts for five years?
Ten.
Ten.
What brand is it?
This is Ricochet. It's a newer gear. I'd say it's a newer, it's newer to us.
If you got into a lease plan that, where that was just a part of your budget, that you knew that every year, that, you know, you're planning for that to come up the next time, is that not something you've looked into, or...
We have. I mean, obviously, nobody likes to pay finance charges, you know. We try to stay clear of that if we have to. But if we have to, we have to.
Well, I know the county, kind of a lease agreement we've done is for our vehicles, and we found that it ended up being less cost to us, not having to come up with those big numbers to purchase a vehicle when it goes bad, when we've got that rotation of those vehicles, so...
We're looking into that as well. I mean, we're trying to explore all options as possible.
Right, because this is a never-ending issue.
It is.
Yeah.
And the price of everything's increasing.
Oh, everywhere on everything, yes. Well, as we kind of explained at the last meeting, we are not the ARPA committee that makes those decisions on the money, so... And I can't even remember who else on that committee. Does anyone recall? I don't...
There's business representatives in the county.
Yeah, there's some local business representatives, and then there, is there anyone on the council that, I know Kelly had been on that, but...
You appointed someone. I don't recall who you appointed. No, I'm not.
I'm not sure. We'll have to check on that and see who is the...
I remember you appointing, hearing you appoint someone, but I don't recall who it was.
I don't either. We'll have to look. Do you know, Lynda, who we appointed to the ARPA committee in place of Kelly? We can look it up, but I think the best thing would be to attend the next ARPA meeting. And I would check, Josh is away this week on vacation, but I know Josh has that schedule, and he is kind of in charge of that. So Josh Messmer, if you'll check with him maybe the first of the week and see when that next meeting is scheduled, and see if you can get on their agenda for that meeting to bring your need in front of them.
Okay.
And it's kind of like they decide if that's something that we can look at, and then it kind of comes back to us. It's a little different process.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
I did reach out to a couple of your town council meeting, town council members, because, you know, obviously, they've got money up there, but they told me that the purchase of the church is, and one other project they've got going on is kind of taking all of theirs.
Right, which is the same thing they told us.
Yeah. I would have liked to seen you get a little bit of that, but...
Okay.
How many, how many people does that outfit?
That was 20 sets.
20 sets? And then, do you fit that individually for your people? Like, okay, so you have 20 bodies that you've already accounted for?
Yep.
Okay.
Good price. I mean, if you're getting 20 sets, it's $70,000?
Yep, that's a good deal.
Yeah, it is a good deal, because I mean, I can remember them being like $5,000, and that's been seven, eight years ago.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's a good, good price. Is there any way you can put those in a different rotation so they don't all come up at the same time?
Well, that's not all over here. I mean, that's only half of it.
Okay, so it is on...
There is somewhat of a rotation already there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, well, I'd urge you to get hold of Josh and get into that meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks for coming.
Is there anything else that needs to come before the council this evening? Doree, did you have something else?
Somebody escorted him out.
The Job Maintenance Committee met tonight, and I apologize...
Oh, that's right, we do have that.
That you did not have this in your packet. That was probably my fault, Lynda.
Everyone got a copy of that that came down a little earlier.
I don't know if you remember, but a couple of weeks before, or maybe during the budget hearings, Bob Hegy had come to you and asked you for, he wanted to do some special incentive money for, from their Title 4D fund, and you guys recommended that they go to the Job Maintenance Committee. Well, now they have someone that's retiring and someone that has a special duty that is going to take over that office administrator place, and so they went ahead and redid the job description for that administrator, including that duty. However, it did not change the tier that it was in, so the pay remains the same.
So this is just more of a job classification adjustment?
Yes, just more of a job description adjustment, and both Bob Hegy and the person taking the job has approved what you have in front of you.
Okay. Well, that's good. Anyone have questions on that? I mean, I don't take issue with it. It's not an increase, so...
And the committee approved this, you said?
Yeah, they met this evening.
And it's duties that were already being handled by that office. It's just a different position that's going to handle those duties.
Okay, so it's a reclassification request? Is that what we would refer to it as?
Yeah.
Someone from the committee want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Thank you, Brian. We have a motion to approve the reclassification request for Title 40. Thank you, Troy. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doree, thanks for explaining that. Sorry, I almost forgot it. Get my calendar out here. Yep, that's right. So our next meeting will be April the 3rd at 6:30 PM here. There's nothing else to come... Oh, Kevin, Kevin, we have the Martinsville Chief of Police would like to...
I told you to wait in the truck. I said I told you to wait in the truck. I found out how to open it. Hey, I just wanted to let you know, about a week or so ago, we had a fairly sizable fire on Christie Drive, and so we had nine people who ended up being sent to the hospitals, whether they drove themselves or via ambulance. We had all the ambulances in the county that were available to be there that night. The reason for this is that the Sheriff's Department personnel, along with the Martinsville Police Department and some EMS folks, were some of those folks that had to go to the hospital. They jumped in, went through windows, they did things that most people are scared to death to do. I just wanted to commend them, tell them thank you. That's quite a fire. We had a lot of stuff going on that night. It was the closest near miss that I've seen in the fire service in a long time. They avoided some bad things happening that evening, but I just wanted to let you know that those people are putting their lives on the line, not just on the roads, but, you know, want to be firemen, too, but... Anyway, I'm just playing around. But we, seriously, when I look at that, I look at the whole group. We work together really well. What a night it was, but for all those that jumped in and did what they needed to do before the fire service could get there, it was remarkable, so I just want to say kudos to them.
I don't think I was aware of that.
Yeah, did you say, did you tell them it was a group home, and there were people in wheelchairs? Yeah, so it was a group home. We had four there. Then we had the house manager, so there were five, and then we had four additional EMS police personnel who ended up having to go to the hospital. So they did an amazing job, and we saved, I say "we" as a group, a lot of travesty that night. So it was really good, so I just want to commend them, so...
Everybody okay now?
Sheriff, thank you so much. Your guys did a great job that night. And then the other one that I wanted to commend, and I wish I knew his name, and I'll find him. There was a sheriff deputy that was there that evening, and I've never seen him before. Unfortunately, there's so many faces changing all the time. But that young man jumped in and helped me, because I end up taking the EMS side of things, and he did some things that normally they would look at me and just like, whatever, I don't know what you're talking about. But he was trained in EMS, and so that right there was a huge benefit for me, because then he could take care of a patient, and he took care of our most severe patient right off the onset. So he did a great job. So I'll get with sheriff on who that was, and I want to recognize those people as well, so... But they did a great job, so just want to let you know.
Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate that. Thank you.
An EMS director named yet? No, in the process.
Okay. All right, well, we want to thank everyone for coming out. Like I said, April 3rd is our next meeting, and if there's nothing else to come before the council this evening, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned, folks. Thank you.